Come on, Pierre. Thank you, Dr. Yernel. We have three items, three motions, and I will go through them one by one. First one is a motion to approve the addition, the addendum to the interim director of the Human Resources contract.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Deming, seconded by Mr. Casper to approve the addendum to the contract. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Mr. Deming, Deming?
Thank you. There is a motion to appoint Mrs. Jacqueline McHale as Director of Human Resources effective on her earliest availability according to the terms of the agreement we've all seen.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Deming and seconded by Mr. Revilmo to approve the Director of Human Resources and the person of Mrs. Jacqueline McHale. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Mr. Deming, with your indulgence, I'd like to ask Mrs. McHale to come forward, maybe she has a few words to say, and welcome.
Thank you.
Hopefully that microphone works.
It does, thank you. And thank you to the members of the board, Dr. Radigan, and the interview committee for your approval of my appointment as your new Director of Human Resources. Maybe if I stand back a little.
You've got the Director of Operations on the move.
As your Director of Human Resources, I am committed to providing high-quality employment service to all of the employees of the Penridge Area School District, and I will strive to seek out employees who will provide exceptional educational opportunities to the students of Penridge School District. I thank you again, and it is my honor to be selected to serve such a prestigious school district. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, we look forward to you actually joining us, hopefully that will be sooner than later. Moving on, Mr. Deming?
Motion number three, thank you, Dr. Yernel. Motion number three is to approve the superintendent's personnel report dated April 8.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Deming, seconded by Mr. Sarnice to approve the superintendent's personnel report. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Motion four has been removed from the agenda, we will be looking at that further. Move that business by any of the board members? If not, we'll move on to announcements. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is slated to be here on April 27, 2015, it will be at 7:30 PM in this room. We did have an executive session, as I mentioned, that was held prior to this meeting for the purpose of Personnel Matters, and there will be an additional executive session held after tonight's Finance Committee meeting for the purpose of negotiations. At this point, are there any further comments from the guests? If not, this meeting is adjourned and we will proceed to the Finance Meeting. Thank you for coming.
Are we coming out here?
No.
We're not?
Mr. Laias, were there anybody signed up out in the shade? Did anyone sign up out there?
Oh, I didn't see any.
It's only us.
All right. Okay, I believe we can get started then with the Finance Meeting. Public comment? So we begin, the only, we have actually one item on the agenda tonight, it's to review our budget, and we have three presentations. Board members can click on their, on each item, and you'll see the PowerPoint, and then the PowerPoints will be up for the audience, so I believe all board members can stay here while the presentation's going.
It's in the computer.
This evening, we're going to start out our presentation with our Transportation Department. Mrs. Armbrust will be going through the Transportation Department budget. It will consist of two parts, one we call the Office Budget, and that, and then the other part is the Garage Budget, that covers all the costs associated with the buses and so forth, so, Mrs. Armbrust?
Good evening, my name is Cheryl, I'm brust, and I'm going to present our budget I put together. If you flip through here, very first page, was there temporary home that we were doing to? It was a bus garage, and we moved in, made it home, made it work, and in November we moved back, we welcomed all the drivers, all the personnel, and these are some pictures of the renovated District Support Center, and how great it looks. I have not heard anybody walk through there without saying, wow, this is great. We have working plumbing, we have clean halls, we have a lot of pluses and perks that we appreciate every day, and if you sit at your desk too long, the lights simply go off and we save electricity, so it's kind of pretty awesome that we are allowed to do that, and we appreciate it, we thank you very much for it. These are some more pictures of the different areas where we have our maps, and the drivers can look up directions and log into their email for the school district. Every year, usually in the fall and in the spring, I have several drivers that will go out, and they will clean up debris along the highway and trash to make this a better community for everybody in Park City. This was done last year in the fall, and we wanted to acknowledge the drivers that had done that. Another project that our drivers had done, they sold each other root beer floats and different little items, and they went around, and the police department are so important to us, and they help us every day in our daily duties, going around collecting children and bringing them to school. Drivers got together, they worked down a deal with Domino's, Domino's donated the pizza, the drivers went and donated everything else they would need, they took the pizzas around, and they dropped them off to all the different area police departments. On the same note, while they were doing that, Park City Police just became eligible to have a K-9 unit, and they contributed towards the K-9 unit, and they put Penridge up on the wall, had it inscribed at the police department, thanking everybody in Penridge for doing so. In October of this past year, working under the trailer, we did a pink-out with conjunction with everybody else in the district that was working on it. Drivers all got together, they purchased the pink shirts, and they came in united with pink shirts to do a pink-out day in recognition of breast cancer awareness. Another one of our drivers, their little pet peeve is the homeless people and the people in need, and what they do is they get together, they donate whatever their supplies are that they need to make soup, they put together peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, they put together little packets with little plastic spoons, napkins, and everything you would need to be able to have a meal, and they have somebody come and they pick it up, and they take it down to Philadelphia, and they supply the people in Philadelphia that are homeless with at least one hot meal. Now, getting into the transportation services that these same people provide every day, right now we are working with 89 home-to-school routes. That means 89 drivers come in every day, pick up in the morning, and take them to the individual schools. We also have nine late bus routes. Those would be your 5 o'clock high school, middle school runs. We also have 16 homework club routes, eight on Tuesday, eight on Thursday. They go around to the elementary schools, and they make sure that these students are getting the extra help that they need, so that they are better able to take their testing, and they are able to do the reading and the math. Working off of last year's numbers, we had 18 summer school routes that ran from July 7th, somewhere into the middle of August, some of them went a little bit later to the end of August. Soon as they were done, the drivers went right back into the regular September 2nd, we're off to go do another school year, so we keep pretty busy throughout the year. Continuing on with the budget, we're looking at a request of $12,694. That is actually a decrease down from last year, which was $23,306. We decreased it by $10,612. Some of the services that we provide in that portion of the budget is CPR and first aid training for all of the aides that we have working with the individual specialized children. We also do the physicals on the drivers, we do random drug testing, snow removals also in with this purchase, they're all kind of combined into that one individual account. The next one we have is other purchase services. We're asking for $2,200. Again, we've decreased the budget by $2,000. This is for local and conference traveling, just so that we can learn how to work better with some of the other districts around here, that maybe they have a way that they're doing something that would be beneficial to us, so we like to stay in and be able to get that knowledge from them. Under Supplies, these are our general office supplies, paper, pens, pencils, software, which would include our Edulog Routing Program and updates that we need for that, as well as refreshments and subscriptions to the different PTAP and different organizations. This, we did a slight increase of $462. Last but not least is Dues and Fees. Again, we decreased that from $1,400 down to $700. Do I have any questions on anything that I presented?
I have a couple of questions. Are the bus routes an increase or decrease from last year?
Actually, they've stayed the same.
Stayed the same, okay. And what do you attribute your decreases to in the budget?
Cutting a lot of costs, trying to keep the expenses down, looking where we may have asked for things last year, but we didn't really actually proceed forward and do it, or there's different places where we've decided we don't really need this much right here, so we're trying to really trim as much excess fat as we can. We're trying to really bring it in and keep it as close as we can.
So do you think you overbudgeted last year, or is this, is this more a realistic picture?
I think this is a more realistic picture. I'm hoping we're not hurting ourselves by trying to go so low, but I really and truly think we can stay well within these numbers. We're trying to keep our needs as simple as possible and not be frivolous in any way.
One of the things that we did take out was the possible contract with Transpar. Last year, we thought we might use Transpar Services again, so that is a big chunk of the budget, that was the $10,000 that was taken out for budget.
Thanks. Do I have any other questions on this portion? This is the bigger portion of our budget. Under the first category, this is actually up $12,000 from last year. However, we are looking into actually hiring a new mechanic. We want to keep the garage fleet as up-to-date with the training as they're going to need, so that we can do a successive planning as people move out and retire or move on. We have up-to-date, modern mechanics that know all the details of the different buses and that they would need to fix, such as the Cummings Engines and the Rohr Engines in Wolfington, and we want them to be as trained and up-to-date so that we can do as much in-house as we can possibly do it, which is very cost-effective for us. Moving down below that, we're asking for $110,600. This is $1,500 anticipated increase. We have not gotten the pricing for the bus washing yet, which, they're the people that come in in the summertime, and they go over the entire fleet to make sure that they're ready to roll on the first day of school, and they're clean and refurbished, and everything is up to where it needs to be to roll out and get the kids. So, we're not sure what the price is going to be, so we're kind of, we're going up $1,500, but we're still trying to keep it down within a reasonable amount. Under the next one, the purchase services, it's $267,600. What's included in there is our auto insurance, we haven't gotten a finalized bill for the auto insurance on all the different vehicles. We're hoping that we can stay within this, but we're also asking for an anticipated increase of $13,900 for that. That also includes some other services that we do, such as contracted services with Buckside U and Overbrook and Lakeside Youth, that we don't really have any control on those, on what it's going to cost us on those, that's billable. We also have supplies, this would be the shop supplies, gasoline and diesel fuel refreshments for the state police when they come in. We're actually decreasing this by $78,862, we can contribute that to the fact that we have gotten very good price on diesel fuel and gasoline, and we locked into it, hopefully for the year, and it's going to substantiate our needs. Under Equipment, I have, I'm asking for $126,700 for the budget. We're actually decreasing this by $14,500. This would include, we're looking at replacing our fuel system. The way we now pump fuel into the vehicles is getting, it's becoming obsolete, and before it breaks down and we end up with a disaster that we can't get fuel for the buses to go out and pick up students, we're being proactive, moving ahead and saying, it's time we look into this, we need to start budgeting for it before it's a disaster and we've got buses sitting. That's why we've increased that area. Other objects, this would be dues, fees, and CDL reimbursement, we actually do reimburse the drivers. We're asking for a $300 decrease with that, so that we could save a little more, there's a little bit of money there that we didn't use, that would be it. One of the things that we are looking into, I'm sorry, was there any questions on that part?
Yes, I'd like to know, what pricing did you get, if you can recall, for the gasoline and the diesel for this coming year?
For some reason, I'm blinking in on like $2.81 a gallon for the diesel fuel, which was a very excellent price compared to where we were, and I believe that the gasoline was a little bit smaller than that. I don't want to misquote you because I don't want to read you the wrong way.
No, that's fine.
Are there any other questions?
I would. Which line was that, was it Equipment, the fuel transfer? Was that, was that in the Supplies section or Equipment?
You mean for the, to pump the fuel into the vehicles?
Yeah, you said you're looking at, you didn't say upgrading, but I took it as you're going to upgrade the fueling station or something?
It, it's an increase, it, we've gotten some quotes to see how much we would have to put in here, we're looking at approximately $25,000.
So what line, what line was that on, or that was?
That is in with Supplies.
In Supplies?
It says 966. We've actually decreased it because the fuel helped keep the price down, even though we're going to have to purchase this.
Okay, I just thought it was somewhere off on its top, thank you.
Do I have any other questions?
No, no, so you have to wait till we're done, then we'll?
That's fine, I'm just saying I have a question.
All right, thanks.
Looking into the future, we have a 2015, 2018 replacement plan. I am looking at, and I'm requesting to be able to replace some of our buses. We have not bought or purchased any buses since 2012, 2013 school year. We have a lot of tired buses that are getting very high in mileage, we are doing as much TLC with these buses as we can, but realistically, it's time that we start replacing some. We also have some buses where we've rechanged certain routes and have done different changes with getting students to school. There's some, certain buses that we certainly don't need to keep in the fleet and keep insurance on them, that we're looking to get rid of those vehicles, pass them on to somebody else, and be able to save the cost of maintaining them, keeping them around, and still not be, still being able to provide the service that we need to get the students to and from the different schools that we service. That's where, we're looking at replacing certain buses. There's a few at the bottom, starting with 53, all the way down to the bottom, 63. Those we just simply want to pass on to somebody else and let them utilize them, and be able to take our savings on those with the insurance, and not having to have to keep them registered and keep them on the fleet and make repairs to them. Do I have any questions on that portion?
Yes. Is the replacement due to the mileage? Is it due to where, what exactly is the reason for the replacement?
We have buses that are from 1998, 1999, we have some that are up in the 300,000 mile range, they're getting very tired, and before we end up having to have to put more money into them than what they're worth, we'd like to replace them and start bringing something else into the fleet where it would go a lot longer.
Okay, well, tired in the sense of mechanically, they're tired because 300,000 miles on a diesel engine, it's?
There's a lot of other components that are, it's the outside of the bodywork, the flooring.
That's what I was looking at in terms of, when you said tired, what exactly does tired mean?
Overall, the whole physical condition of the vehicles. If we need to replace transmissions, we actually do do that. These are buses that, I mean, we've had buses this past year since September where we ripped the floor up and replaced it, because it, we had it, we needed, we need to get, we need to utilize the vehicle, we're kind of strapped in that area so that we replace the floor, but it's not an economical thing and an economical place that we want to keep doing this. It's going to end up costing us more to keep replacing pieces off the bus. There's, I was at a bus today where the mirrors weren't staying on because the fiberglass had, there was no place to bolt it fast, they had to sit and improvise it and go a different route with rubber, rubber baskets and bolt it on that one. So they're, they're getting to the point where it's time that we replace them before they leave us somewhere that we're not, it's going to cost us more to tow it back than if we would just simply be a little proactive.
Thank you.
Mrs. Armbrust, I suppose, did you want to explain that you were also asking for one additional wheelchair bus? I think that was also on this presentation.
Yes, one of the vehicles that we are asking for, besides the regular, normal-sized vehicles, the 72-passenger student buses, we also, because of a need in the district, are asking to look into purchasing one more wheelchair bus, because we have a lot of area in the district. We're finding more and more that we're getting students that require the wheelchair lift to get onto the bus, and we're not, we don't have the, we're making do, sometimes we'll split it up, have a one-wheelchair position bus go one way, and another one-person wheelchair bus go the other way to get them into school, but we could combine it in a different way, and it would be more cost-effective to take one bus and pick up both students.
Mr. Thompson, do you have a question?
Yes, I do, Dr. Yernel. Unfortunately, I cannot hear the microphone presentation, and I was going to ask the same questions that Mr. Revilmo, I guess. 200,000 miles on a diesel engine is not sufficient motive for replacement. When the comment was, the buses are tired, I did not hear what that meant. Does that mean body damage, or what exactly does that mean?
What that means in terms of tired is our buses have a lot of wear and tear on them, the flooring on the buses are in need of replacement, we have found a lot of places where the floor on some of the vehicles are actually completely rotted, and we're ripping them up. The vehicle is out of commission until we can get that done. It's getting to the point with some of our vehicles that it's not cost-effective to keep replacing different pieces on it.
Did you hear the answer, Mr. Thompson?
No, not really, no.
Okay.
Great deal, Mr. Revilmo, if Mr. Revilmo is satisfied with that answer, I'll bow to him, because I have the same concern.
Okay.
Ken, I have a question, though. What do you mean the floor is rotting? Like through the bus, or through the lats?
When you walk onto the bus, when you walk up the steps to get onto the bus, when the seats are all bolted to the floor, underneath the coloring, some of our buses are black, some of them are brown marble, it's basic linoleum, a little bit heavy, it's heavy-duty linoleum, underneath that is plywood, bolted to the chassis of the vehicle. That is the part that's actually rotting, it's actually dangerous. There's, at certain places, under the driver's suite, there's some sheet metal on top of the wood, it's just with wear and tear and age, it becomes necessary to replace those places where that gets used a lot, or it gets stepped on a lot, or. There's different things that help progress this along, salt, snow, water. As it's habitually put onto the vehicle, it just keeps sinking in.
And you're saying the plywood is too expensive to replace?
The time for them to either ship out to somebody else to be able to do this work, or to have the mechanics have a bus in for five, six days, and to be able to purchase all, all the details that we need to put this back together again, it's become very un-cost-effective to do this.
And it can't be done in the summer when they're not in use? Without the time constraint?
During the summertime, we have our summertime runs running, we also have state police inspections going on, and that's when the drive, when the mechanics actually play a lot of catch-up that they didn't have time to do during the school year, they also do a lot of their inspections. Besides the state police coming in, they themselves have to do inspections.
I have a question about the, so in 2016, 17, and 2017, 18, the smaller buses, the 29 and 30, you're just not replacing them also, is that why it says no? I mean, you're going to get rid of them, or?
We were looking to get rid of those two particular buses. We can't plan too far in advance because you don't know what special needs you're going to have coming into the district. You need to give yourself a little room, and if you need to replace them, you may need to replace them with a smaller bus coming in. We were trying to lean towards vehicles rather than the microberds, which is what sits out front in the front parking lot, we're trying to look at the other buses that are in the back, which give us a whole lot more use to them. Short of specialized wheelchair buses, we also have short buses. Students themselves actually like those buses because they don't feel like they're being singled out, and it doesn't give them the stamina and the poor self-esteem that, oh, look what came to pick us. They feel like they're just part of everybody else, they got a bus just like everybody else, it's just a smaller version, and it gives them a little more, we've heard different comments from the students, and that's a more positive influence on them than, oh, the short bus came to pick me up. The smaller buses, we can utilize if we have a small class, sometimes we do ESL, there's other different groups that we take to different elementary schools, they can all fit onto the shorter bus where they wouldn't fit in the microberds. It gives us more It gives us more space, more utilization, and better able to use them on a normal basis and put them out in different runs where the specialized little buses kind of hamper you. Some of them are 16-passenger, some are eight-passenger. They don't give you the ability and the flexibility that you can use them in different runs. Do I have any other questions?
Yes. You have one more slide to go or did I? The transfer, Kathy, is that, is that inclusive of the cost of the replacement of the buses or that's not in there?
It is. If you look at that last slide, if you, if we look at the last slide, and this is Armbrus, I'll do this one for you. This is kind of my slide anyways. If you look on the first line, we currently have $779,881 in our Fund 32 Capital Projects Fund that has already been earmarked for buses over the last several years where we haven't purchased buses. I'm going to kind of put my plug in as I did for computers. It's the same thing. We can't let all our buses go to the last minute and try to replace the entire fleet at one time. We're not going to be able to afford that. So the same, same rule of thumb kind of goes here with our buses as well. So we did already put some money aside that we haven't spent yet, that's the $779,000. In the 15-16 budget, we had put $700,000 in because that has, and it's typically been the amount of money we have set aside for the bus transfer annually. Again, for the last two years, we have not made that transfer. That money has come out in order to balance the budget. So if you take the current balance and if we had the request to transfer $700,000, that would give us about 1.4 million, almost $1.5 million in available funds. Mrs. Armbrus is estimating that the cost of the buses that she's asking to replace to be around $975,000. So at the end of the day, if that was true, we would have $504,881 more than what we need for this year's replacement plan. So in other words, we could actually reduce that $700,000 request by $504,000 to reduce the amount of money that would be requested in the 2015-16 budget.
Okay, thank you. Also, thanks for doing the presentation. It seems that you always get questions, questions about, you know, replacement vehicles. Are there enough miles? Condition of the body? Maybe there, I mean, I, since I've been on the board, I've come to believe that we kind of maximize the life of the vehicles. But I think if you could like maybe just come to this and just show us what you're talking about because I think they're good questions that the board asks because, you know, typically, as Mr. Thompson said, 200,000 on a diesel is not that much of a big deal. But 200,000 over 17 years is a different kind of mileage to me. And just from being around for a while, you learn that these things get beaten up pretty bad. So I think it would just be easier for us in some ways to just, you know, the picture's worth a thousand words. And I'm not criticizing you, but I just think for me, maybe that takes some of the pain out of, out of this. And also, and thanks to Kathy to remind us, we just can't help, we just can't keep, what do we, we missed one year of purchasing there, right? Or two?
Actually, two. And if you were to approve the budget and approve us getting, approve us to go out to bid for buses, more than likely, these buses will not be here even for next year. It will be closer to the 16-17 school year until these buses come in. Because typically, we're approving these to go out to bid in November, December. And in January, February, we're approving the bids so that they can start processing because the bus companies have their schedule of when they run the chassis down the line for school buses.
Right, so I think that's an important thing for, you know, future boards to know that too, that, you know, it's not something we like to spend the money on, but if we get, if we let it go too far, we're going to get crushed one year. And it's always, I think it's more painful that way. So thank you, that's all I, that's why I made those comments, thank you.
Just a point of note, something else that we've, something else that we've actually done. We've explored this as an area where maybe we could do something in this direction. We've taken one of our vans, van number 60, which is one of the greenish-gray minivan-type vehicles that we use, and we sent it up to the local vocational technical school as a project for them to work on. The only cost to us was to buy the supplies to get the bodywork fixed. It was a win-win situation. In collaboration with the VOTEC, students learned how to do the part that they needed to do with the body of it and put it back together. And it really didn't, it was great savings for us. They had the time, resupplied the vehicle, resupplied the parts. They were our district students. So it was a win-win situation for everybody. And it seemed like a great idea in an area where we're actually going to look into exploring for next year. Certain, we're not going to be able to send a lot out there, but if we could get one older vehicle refurbished and done at a cost savings, we think that would be, it's a great way to work with the vocational technical students. And I just wanted to mention how that went into place this year and we're just about ready to go reclaim our vans. Do I have any questions? I thank you for your time.
All right, Sue, I can't promise if you have, do you have comments or questions?
I have questions. They're questions you guys ought to be asking.
That's a comment.
Yeah, that's an opinion.
Oh, you said they were questions?
I have questions.
Well, you made a comment.
And I made a comment. My first question is, let's just start with the good stuff.
Can you, can you go over to the microphone so we can all hear you?
I won't do that, I'll be happy to do that.
Sue Farland, West Rock Hill Township. I have a few questions for the Transportation Department. She stated several times that in her opinion, it is more financially sound to buy a new bus. I'd like to know the assumption of how many buses were in that number for the next year's budget request and what the assumed average price was for the buses? How many buses are there?
Wait a second, wait a second. You know, employees don't have to answer your questions.
Well, no, I would think you all would know.
She can't say it right now.
Well, we don't have estimates. We get, we get a bid on a bus.
She gave me a number. There had to be a number of buses that assumed cost.
Ask Gus, don't ask the employees.
I'm asking you guys, I'm looking at you guys.
That's why I said that.
I thought Mr. Sarnes wanted...
There's eight, it looks like there are eight replacements and one new one. And, and the estimated cost was 975. So you can figure out the average, $975,000.
And it was also stated that it appeared the best financial decision would be to replace a bus because the cost to refurbish it was too high. Is there a methodology in doing that cost-benefit analysis that the Transportation Department uses to determine whether a bus is, it's cheaper to repair the bus versus replacing that bus? I mean, I don't want to go on somebody's gut level and then spend $100,000 bucks because, you know, it costs $25,000 to replace a floor.
Okay, she explained all that.
No, she didn't. I want to know, is there a methodology bus-by-bus or is it just a gut feel?
Well, there's inspections. That would be a methodology.
That's not comparing the cost to refurbish or to purchase.
You asked me for a methodology, you didn't ask me, you didn't ask for comparison. A methodology is to pass an inspection. A methodology is to pass safety standards.
And after it, either fails or passes the inspection, you have to decide, okay, it didn't pass inspection. What is, on a bus-for-bus basis, is there an intelligent way to say, this is the cost to refurbish? We've gone through it, we've added it up, it's 25 grand, or we can replace it for $95,000? Is that being done?
She's the expert, so I'm, I'm... Yes, I have to defer to her, but...
Actually, I can answer that. This, these are actually back to our transfire replacement report that we had paid the company to come in. We looked at it. Again, we're looking at this number of items that we're taking into consideration, safety being one of those. The older these buses get, the less safety features they have on our new buses. Our new buses do have additional safety features on them that these older buses don't have. So again, we, safety is one of our number-one things that we are looking at in addition to the cost of replacement. I do know there are two buses on there that are not able to be fixed. They are actually just sitting in the lot doing nothing because of the internal coolant problems that they have. Hopefully, that's a little bit more information for you.
Thank you. What preventive maintenance is being implemented to minimize future damage and wear and tear on the buses? Since this is an expensive item, salt was cited, perhaps not. She said that the mechanics try to catch up in the summer, so it sounds like maybe they're falling behind on maintenance that would perhaps in the long run shorten the life of a bus. Considering that this is one of our biggest expenses and we are having difficulty affording new buses, what preventive measures are being implemented, if any?
Well, I don't think that's something that's really the subject of our talk tonight. I mean, we're, we don't have time to go over all that right now.
So you'll go over it in the future?
Yes, if it's something we're at once, we will go over it. But right now, that was not, we're talking about capital expenditures, not maintenance, so...
Well, you're talking about the budget. I would assume that if you implemented preventive maintenance, there could be an associated cost with an associated savings.
Okay, I, I agree with you, but that's it. What's your next question?
Oh, she said that in the 2015-16 budget, there was a $25,000 new cost for implementing a new fuel dispensing equipment situation. I was just curious. Apparently, that $25,000 was spent this year on something else. I was just curious what that was. You have to knock something out to make room for the new $25,000.
Mrs. Armbrus explained that in that included were the, was the cost of the fuel, which was much higher this year. So we decreased the fuel budget and then increased for this particular new program.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Linden, do you have any questions? Thank you. Yes, thanks, Cheryl. You can go, now we're done.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Kathy Shire. I'm Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instructional Technology. And I will be presenting the 2015-16 budget this evening. First slide, you'll see a comparison, trying to do both here, of the curriculum office budget. So it's broken down between last year and this year, so you can see the variances. The 1100-030 budget, the curriculum office budget that has to do with students, you'll see last year was $283,000. This year, we're proposing a $5900 budget because last year, we did not budget for starter supplies for the one-to-one program, which we have this year for our incoming ninth graders, which would include earbuds, power strips, etc. You'll see the program improvement budget, which the next slide will be broken out. But the total program improvement budget, you'll see close to a $500,000 increase, and I will explain that as well. Our summer school, excuse me, budget from last year to this year remains the same. There's also an increase in our curriculum office that does not, it's admin, it's an admin fund, not to do with students. And there's also an increase to that fund. Okay, so I, excuse me? Okay, so the first variance I already talked about was for the starter supplies. The second one, which I will go into more detail, is program improvement, and that is another year of one-to-one. There was no variance again for summer school. So I'll explain the curriculum office budget increase. Last year's budget was $79,975. This year, we have budgeted to be for $84,557. That is for two things. So there's an increase of $16,750 because Virtual High School, which was our cyber class this year, was not budgeted for. So I budgeted it for that for this coming year. And then there was a decrease of $11,000 that was budgeted $15,000 last year for the noodle rooms. So we had a $15,000 budget. $3,000 was used from that budget, so the $11,000 was the decrease. $16,750 is for the Virtual High School. So there's about a $500 difference between there. So there are variances on last year's budget to this year's budget, more descriptive look at that. Okay, so for the 2015-16 upcoming year, school year, the $332,527 is the lease, the cost to lease the current equipment, continued lease for one-to-one for our current ninth and 10th grader. So that would continue that. The $668,000 is the expansion equipment cost to purchase one-to-one, the computers and everything for teachers and students. That is the purchase cost, not the lease cost. The lease cost, if we decided, if you decide to go lease instead of purchase, would be $130,000. So you're looking at the lease for nine and 10 is the 332. Full payout price for next year's students would be $668,000. Lease for the incoming ninth graders would be 100, about 130,000. Okay, so then our total program improvement budget is $248,659, which was presented at the Academic Performance Committee already, so that, we presented that. Our total textbook replacing is $94,400, just a little bit less than last year. And our curriculum writing benefits is about $1,200, somewhat less than last year as well. So the variance in the totals for this department, as you can see, is the $500,000. So the $668 would be if we were to continue with one-to-one and we were to purchase the technology for our students and teachers next year. And the 130 then would be if we, if you decided to lease. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Yes. Is there a reason why you would even consider moving from the lease to the purchase? Since it's a tight budget year and you're projecting 500-plus thousand dollars in additional cost to do that?
No, I don't believe, so I wanted to make sure that you had the figure, that that's how much it would cost because there is an extra cost when you lease and we have to look at the interest rates. So that's how much it would cost in our current budget situation. Yes, I would be recommending the lease.
And are the same number of classes projected in terms of the Virtual High School as this year? You said it was not budgeted last year. We did implement it because of loss of teachers and not replacing them. Do we anticipate the same number of classes or the same cost for the Virtual High School? Or is this simply a rollover from what it's costing us this year?
No, it's actually a decrease from that original, and I only understand, I mean, I've seen the cost, the total cost for this year. We are not considering cyber classes for incoming freshmen or sophomore for certain classes and subjects. But we do want to budget for... But we do want to budget for, there's one class that we're taking has been very successful, and we don't want to lose that option for students. So that is really what we're continuing for this year.
It's only a distraction behind you.
Ignore it.
Yeah, my apologies. I'm sincerely sorry.
That's okay.
It's part of what's going on.
Confused.
Okay, and specifically in terms of the Latin program, which obviously was not a success, I think, by most standards, that would not be one of the classes that we'll try to do in a cyber setting, or it will be?
It will not be.
Yes, yes, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I have asked, we saw in my discussions with Yamanco School District, Dr. Hollister's superintendent, he's using a Lenovo, IBM Lenovo laptop that he is paying $450 a copy for. I have asked Dr. David Torado if we had considered, I know we're using Lenovo also, but I'm, I don't know exactly the cost of the Lenovo unit that we're using, but based on my question to Dave Torado, it's not the $450 model. I asked Max Smith if we had considered that in our previous discussions, and he respectfully referred me to Dr. Shire as the head of this and in charge of making these decisions, as did Dave Torado. He said he's operating on the specifications that are coming from the, from your office, and that he doesn't want, the reasons he gave were because the less expensive units don't last as long, and maybe they're not as capable. I would respectfully request that we at least try something, according to Dr. Hollister, and I don't know how his specifications would differ from ours, but it seems like this is a possibility of saving a significant amount of cost, if in fact we could use a less costly model, whether we lease it or purchase it.
You heard the question?
Yes, I did.
And Mr. Torado is here as well, I will tell you. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Thompson, I don't know what the specs are for the Lenovo for Alanco. I certainly can look at those. I do know that the Lenovo that we will be recommending this year does meet the specs that are required by the curriculum that has already been established at Pen Ridge that has been working. So I don't know whether the Alanco Lenovo has different, I don't know what those specs are. So certainly, Mr. Torado and I can take a look, and we can do a comparison. I don't know that we have the same needs, I don't know what their needs are. So I certainly will do that with Mr. Torado, and we'll take a look, and we can come back and then report, yes, you know, hey, maybe this is a possibility, or maybe our needs, our curricular, our instructional needs aren't the same. And that's really where we base our decisions. Our decisions are based on not necessarily the computer. Obviously, you want to have the capabilities of the computer for the curriculum and instruction piece, because that's really what drives this. So you want to make sure that you have looked at devices and you have, we have chosen the most cost-effective one that will give us what we're looking for. So the short answer is then, yes, we can look side by side, because I don't really know, I don't really know anything about that school district. I would have to be sitting down with that curriculum director and say, kind of compare what they were doing and match that up to what ours was. Does that make sense?
I have a great deal of difficulty hearing from that, from that podium, but I believe, I mean, I certainly understand that we need a device that meets our requirements. I just was asking, have we considered that less costly device? If we have and it doesn't work, that's fine, but it seems like when we're under this kind of budget constraints, and we, those of us who are involved in this one-on-one, I believe, realize how important it is to the, to the school district, I would like to make sure that we're leaving no stone unturned to make this as, as, as cost-effective as we possibly can for Pen Ridge.
Agreed. So I will go back and take a look and do those comparisons. From what I understand though, is the original decision with the Lenovo last year that met our needs, it is along the same line, I know it is, it's, it's the same product, actually, it's just an upgraded model, it's very durable. But to your point, is there something else out there where we can get what we need and it's durable and those things though? Absolutely, I will go back and I'll do that comparison.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
I have a question. Just to clarify, Dr. Shire, hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Did you say the $130,000 would be for the lease for the new ninth and tenth graders coming in as opposed to the $668? Do I have that?
The, the $332 would be for the current ninth, so 10-11 next year. The $130 would be the incoming freshman. So then we would be looking at a difference of $538,000, subtract it from those two that year.
Okay, and I thought I heard you say, I'm not sure if I heard it correctly, that there were more, there were added costs that weren't included in the rental number? Did I hear you say that?
No, it was just that the Curriculum Office student budget, there wasn't a, well, we did not budget last year for earplugs or earbuds and those kinds of things.
So that's in here?
For, that was just for student budget.
Okay, and that's in here?
That is in here now, yes. If you don't have questions about that, I just wanted to go over, I really wanted to talk about the assessment of one-to-one. Bear with me, because since I, I came to Pen Ridge, really, the questions have been, how do we know this is working? Certainly, it costs a lot of money, but it, and it was a difficult decision to make, but we really need to be looking at, is it working? Well, what is it that we're looking at? What is it that we're measuring? And the conversations that we have been having really have been basically around 21st century learning skills. So I just did a very little bit of research, and when school districts are asked, how do we measure whether these kinds of programs work, sometimes people want to say, oh, your standardized test scores will increase. Well, in reality, standardized test scores, as you can see, and these are researchers out there, certainly it isn't me, they're not really testing 21st century learning skills. So, so what do you say? Do you look at PSSAs and say, well, our scores are getting better, it must be because of our one-to-one program? No, and the researcher will say, that isn't really what you should be looking for, because they're not measuring problem-solving, analyzing, creating, communicating. They're not collaboration, they don't measure that way. So what do you do? So, a lot of people are looking, it's not just Pen Ridge, many districts who, who have made this decision say, how are we going to measure? And I have spoken to different directors in different school districts in our county, and they don't know either. And there are products out there that will measure, some of them, some people think that they're doing a nice job, some people aren't quite sure. So we are now on a mission, because at the last school board meeting, it was approved that we need to take an internal assessment. We need to be looking at what we do, how is it currently working, how does it measure up to other school districts, how are we going to measure progress over time? How do we know we're actually getting our bang for our buck with these purchases? So that is where we're moving. I can't come here and say, yes, exactly 82% of, you know, student scores have increased because of one-to-one, but this is what we did. What we did was, with the help of wonderful teachers at the high school, Hillary Sifliski and Karik Garish, I asked them, is there any way we can just at least survey some of our ninth graders, let's see how it's working for them right now, just so I can share some information? So these are the questions that we asked. So there were two ninth grade teams, and they represent the academic and honor students. And we asked them, in what ways has technology in schools supported your creativity, how you collaborate with peers, how you communicate with your teachers, how does it support your individual learning, and which skills do you feel have been most improved due to the laptop program?